Very much on time. Thank you very much. It's 11 o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. I don't see anybody here, so be noted, we have no citizen agenda. Item four is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, if we got a motion in a second. Any other comments on the agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye. That is approved. Item five is our scheduled agenda item for today. It's a discussion and possible action on changes to the county's health insurance plans. Sherri Matthews, thank you for coming. Sherri, Senior Account Manager with Wellmark, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield of South Dakota will present the information for us. Sherri, you got the floor.
Thank you. We've had a lot of opportunities to discuss our benefits and what we have today and what possible options we might want to look at in the future. And there was two main concerns as we discussed it, and it was, one, we want to make sure that we have rich benefits for the employees of the county, and two, how do we get some cost savings? Maybe shift some of that risk to the county and get some of the savings. And so I've met with Commissioner Krogman and Commissioner Pierce a few times, along with HR and the department director, and we've walked through a number of options and limit, or drilled it down to the 3,000 deductible plan that we're looking at today. And so I want to walk through first what two options are available today, what we're proposing for January of 2020, it would be, and then also the health reimbursement piece that would accompany that, how it looks, and then the financials as well. In your packets, there are, I think, three sheets you should have in there, and we'll want to walk through each of those. Happy to answer any questions you might have as we go along. Is there anything from Commissioner Krogman or Pierce that we want to address ahead of time?
No, just a quick couple of comments is, as we started this, and the reason we started this was to take a look, it's been a long time since we've looked at our healthcare plans, and we just wanted to see what the options were out there and stuff. And so Sherri met with us for three different times and brought different numbers and different ideas, and has been very helpful of getting to where we're at right now with this kind of suggestion that we have. And so we're hoping that with this suggestion that we will be able to accomplish our objectives that we were looking at is to save the county some money, but also keep the benefits very close to what they had before for our employees. So this is kind of where we got down to. It seems to us, Commissioner Pierce and I, that doing this has potential income savings that makes it worth doing this plan. If we were saving $10,000, we wouldn't be fooling around with it. But I think there's a substantial potential for savings here, along with keeping some good benefits. So any questions for us during the time? Certainly, you know, you allow us to, we'll jump into if they have questions, so.
Perfect, please do. So the first sheet you have in front of you, it's benefit information, and it has Plan A, Plan B, and then an alternate listed on there. And I do want to walk through what we have today, just so we understand what our starting point is and what some potential changes that we may want to make with those benefits to put in place for next January. Again, these are, any financial that we have on here are strictly estimates, because we still have a renewal that'll come out for next January. So this is based on the numbers for today, and just giving us some ideas of what we should see. We will definitely revisit and rerun as we look at our next renewal to make sure these numbers are still in line. So the first plan that we have, and both A and B that are offered are what we consider grandfathered plans, and we do want to talk through that. We did spend quite a bit of time understanding that part of it, but I just want to walk through what that means for the plan if we remove it for both the county and for the member as well, and then drill into what each of those plans look like. So let's just talk about grandfathered, non-grandfathered really quick. When healthcare reform started in 2010, there was a lot of talk from President Obama that said, "If you like your plan, you can keep it," and the counties liked their plan, and we kept it. The biggest reason is because there were so many provisions, and we walked through a number of those provisions, but they were coming out, and we didn't know what that might mean for a plan. We've seen everything. Everything is through. We know what it means. To remove grandfathering status at this point has no implications anymore for groups. What it does do as a county, because there are richer benefits if we remove the grandfathering status and we start moving the plan around, the member gets additional benefits, so the county would potentially pay more. If we kept the same plan, just moved it non-grandfathered, we're looking to 2% to 3% more. So some of the benefit, the couple things that are in there for grandfathered versus non, for the member, if we move it to a non-grandfathered plan, which is what we would have to do to look at a different option, that member gets preventive benefits paid at 100%. Right now, the co-insurance, so the percentage that they would pay of that bill gets applied to any preventative services. So that's one of the biggest things. And preventive being like colonoscopies, your routine physical when you go to the doctor's office, it's immunizations, mammograms, those things right now all apply some member cost share. If we move it to non-grandfathered or we move this plan, there's no member cost share. The members get that benefit paid at 100%, true benefit to them. The other thing that's different is if we move it to a different plan, we have to apply everything towards their total annual out-of-pocket. Right now, office visit copays and prescription copays do not apply towards their out-of-pocket. They just keep going. So if we move it, we have to apply those benefits to their out-of-pocket. So it's a member enhancement as well, and that's where the additional cost can come in. So we want to make sure we move it, the deductible high enough so that we get that cost savings and outweigh that, but it's truly member benefit to move to a non-grandfathered plan. Any questions about grandfathered, non-grandfathered? Some people thought, "We really need to hold on to this," and not here, but some companies think, "We still need to hold on to this. What's the implications?" There really is none besides having that additional potential cost just to move that. So any questions about grandfathered, non-grandfathered? All right, with none, let's look at Plan A. That's the $300 deductible. We have about 53% of your employees are enrolled in that plan at this time, so 45 contracts are enrolled in the $300 deductible plan, and the other 39 are in the 1,000 plan. So it's a pretty even split right now, and part of it, they really look at of what are they going to be paying for the services that they receive. So on this first plan, it's a $300 deductible, so they pay that flat amount. And let me start from the beginning. The provider will send us a bill. Let's say it's $1,000 for the service. Wellmark looks at it and says, "We pay 500 for that service." That's what we allow, so the member gets the discount. And then off of that allowed amount, we apply the deductible first. That's the flat dollar amount that your member has to pay. It's $300 on this plan. After they pay that flat amount, they then pay a 20% co-insurance, so they pay a portion of the bill after they meet their deductible, and the insurance carrier, Wellmark, pays the rest of it, so they pay 20% of that. Their deductible plus that 20% co-insurance apply to their total out-of-pocket maximum. That's the annual that this, annual amount this member would pay would be $800 on an annual basis. So the max they pay, that includes that flat dollar amount of 300 and then that 20% co-insurance, until they hit $800 out of their pocket. Their prescriptions under this plan all apply deductible and then that co-insurance until they hit their 800. Any office visits under this plan, they pay their deductible and then their co-insurance. So it's a pretty basic plan, stops them at $800. So that's Plan One. This is one of the oldest type of plans we have. This is what it used to look like back in the day, I would say. So it's a really nice, rich plan, but they are paying for all their prescriptions, they're paying for all their office visits up until they hit their first flat 300, then 20%. Questions on the first plan? And these are probably familiar to you. I just want to make sure that we're, have a starting point. So the second plan that's available is that $1,000 deductible plan, where they pay the first $1,000, and then they pay 15% of that remaining bill until they hit a total out-of-pocket under this plan of 2,000 annually. So again, they pay the flat amount, then a percentage until they hit a total of $2,000. They do have office visit copays on this, so when they go to the doctor's office, if the doctor bill is $170, we say, "No, that's $100." That member always pays just the flat $20 copay, and then we pay the rest of that. So they just pay 20. And then on pharmacy, if they get a generic, they pay $10. Every time they pick up the prescription, $20 if it's a name brand, a preferred name brand, and then 30 if it's a non-preferred name brand. So we split them out in tiers, and the member pays based on what they're purchasing. So they pay 10, 20, or 30 every time they pick up a prescription. The copays for the office visit and the pharmacy do not apply towards that total annual out-of-pocket maximum. Because it's a grandfather plan, we didn't have to, and we can't make a lot of changes within these grandfather plans, so they can continue to pay for these copays even though they've met their 2,000 out-of-pocket. When I do look at 2017 and 2018, just to see in history what they've paid, there are some that have paid 1,500, 1,700 in copays, and so they're paying an additional 1,500 or 1,700 because they've met their 2,000 out-of-pocket for deductible co-insurance plus their copays. So they're not stopped at that 2,000. Some are paying, you know, for 4,000 plus. So that's the current two plans. Questions on the $1,000 plan? Okay, so what we're proposing is to do a blend of these two plans and to make it rich for the member, we would move it to non-grandfathered, and what that would give them is preventive paid at 100%, and then everything having to apply to the out-of-pocket maximum. So with that, we said, "Let's do a $3,000 deductible." And remember, we're going to, we'll talk about the reimbursement piece of it, but this is a starting plan. So we have a $3,000 deductible. There is no co-insurance on there, so their out-of-pocket is 3,000. There are office visit copays on there, so they would still pay $20 if they go to the office visit, so that mirrors your $1,000 plan, and the prescriptions are 10, 20, or 30 based on the tier level they get, so that would match the plan as well. The one caveat on this one, to do the reimbursement, the way we're looking at it, is if they're on a single plan, it's $3,000. That is their total out-of-pocket for the year, January through the rest of the year. If they're on family, they'd have to meet the entire family, so even one person could meet that 6,000, or a combination of people. So that's how we have to set this up in order to do the reimbursement piece. So it's a pretty straightforward plan, and then our savings on here, we're estimating about 20% savings based on our calculations from this year's rates, which means about $21,000 a month in premium, $256,000 a year in savings. So there's where the county starts to save some money, but yet we want to make this member whole. We don't want a $3,000 deductible for the member, so let's look at what can we do to help, help them and compensate them. And that brings us to the second page. And the second page then talks about how it would look to the member, what the reimbursement piece would be from the county, and then the Wellmark plan. So the Wellmark plan is that 3,000 we talked about, if they're on single. And so we're just going to look at the single employees right now, and we have about 50 out of our 84 contracts are single, single contract holders. So they have a $3,000 deductible with Wellmark, and that's on the far right. However, to them, what it would look like is they have a $500, because they'll pay the first $500, and then the county starts reimbursing them those deductible amounts up to $2,000. So once the member meets their first 5,000, county starts reimbursing at a percentage, 80% of the dollars, until they hit a total of 2,000 reimbursement. So to the member, it looks like they have a $500 deductible. They pay 20% co-insurance after that until they hit $1,000. They do have the $20 copay on there, so office visits are $20, and the prescriptions are paying 10, 20, or 30. Those copays and the deductible they pay, along with the co-insurance, all go towards that total of $3,000. So there's a number of ways that the member could hit 3,000. However, what we want to do is put that reimbursement account on there to say, "All right, if you do meet 500 of your deductible, so for any facility charges, your deductible and co-insurance will only apply for facility because your office visit copays are covered, your office visits are covered by copays, and your pharmacy is covered by copays." So those members will just pay their copay, the insurance pays the rest. But those facility charges, which would be your inpatient services, if they get admitted into the hospital, your ER, your outpatient services for an outpatient surgery, or even home durable medical equipment, those all apply deductible co-insurance. So that's where the county would say, "We're going to start, we're going to help you meet that total out-of-pocket. So you pay the first 500, we'll pay 80% after that. You pay 20% of it. Once you've paid 1,000 out of your pocket, you're done." So the county will pay the $2,000. Cumulatively, between what the employee pays, what the county could pay, and those copays, the max that'll be paid out is $3,000 by either the member or the county. Does that make sense?
Basically, we are going to be the health insurance company for the dollars prior to the 3,000. Before our, well, before Wellmark kicks in, we're going to cover that. Okay, so we're basically insuring ourselves for the first portion of it, rather than insuring ourselves completely. That's where Wellmark's going to kick in with the 20,000. So our savings that we have of $250,000 will be reduced by the amount that we have to pay in, and then that difference would be up to $3,000. And the way this first one with the single would set up is the employee would pay 1,000 of it, we'd pay 2,000 of it, is how we would do it. That'd be a max for that person. And then after that, it kicks into Wellmark, and Wellmark pays 100% of everything. Okay, so now we're self-insuring, basically, first part of it. And so that's where, we're not saving $256,000 right off the bat. We're also taking a risk of if, we talked about this, if 90-some employees and max hit their deductible, which is not the case. Right now, we're at, I don't know, 40, I can't remember how many.
40 is what we estimated, and we'll look at those estimates.
30% or 40% of our people are hitting ours, so if we look at our numbers, we're not going to do the max. But worst-case scenario, we'd have to pay $2,000 for all, all 94 employees, I think. Is that how?
For single contracts and then 4,000, and we can talk about family.
Yeah, for there. So we would be, you know, over that. So the risk we're feeling is probably not really what's going to happen. I don't know if ever, we've ever had that. So we've looked at the numbers of the people that were hitting theirs based off the last few years and saying, "Okay, maybe 40% will hit their max." And so if we take 40% of our numbers of the singles and 40% of the, of the families, you know, we might be paying, you know, 80,000 or something like that. Then our savings is about 170,000 rather than, or 125 or something like that, rather than the 256. So.
But what I think Sherri's going to tell us is, you already have the math on the maximum we could end up paying as a county, so we would know what dollar amount our risk is. And then the recovery depends on the health of our employees and their family, but we'll know the maximum we could pay.
And we'll, that third sheet shows that I think we want to make sure we touch base and understand how this part looks to the member as well for a single contract versus a family, and then we do want to look at those maxes that we're going to pay, because what it is, is the county is partially self-funding the risk on it. Instead of fully self-funding it, it's a partial. And so you know your max risk per single contract could be $2,000 you'd pay out. If they're on a family contract, it would be up to 4,000. And so let's just take a peek at that. If they're on a family contract, and there's 34 employees right now that we have on a family contract, the family, whether it's one person or cumulative in there, they would pay the first $1,000, and then the county would start reimbursing up to a total of 4,000 for a family contract. And so that member or that family would pay 2,000 towards their deductible and co-insurance, and the other portion would be paid by the county. They still have their office visit copays of $20 or the pharmacy of 10, 20, or 30. And so however we get to that total of 6,000, because that's the Wellmark plan, it'd be a combination of either copays, deductible, co-insurance, and what the county pays. So really just a cumulative of what they're, what they're using. If somebody uses just office visit copays and just prescriptions, and they hit their out-of-pocket maximum, the county doesn't share in any of that cost. But if they do use any facility services, inpatient, outpatient, ER, then the county starts sharing in that risk. For the employee, what they will see is, we say, "Hey, you have a $3,000 out-of-pocket maximum. Here's your, your office visit copay is $20, your prescription copays are 10, 20, or 30. If you go to the hospital, it's a $500 is your deductible, then the county is going to help cost share that, and then you pay up to another 500 in co-insurance." So you could pay $1,000 to go to a facility. Once you hit your deductible, they would submit something. We would work through WageWorks is our proposal at this time. That's who Wellmark partners with as our vendor. WageWorks is who also can do flex, HSAs, health reimbursement accounts, so they can set up the reimbursement account, and then that member would submit, "Hey, I've met," either their explanation of benefits or their member responsibility report that they can get from Wellmark, submit that to WageWorks and say, "Hey, I'm at my first $500 for my deductible." And so then they will start reimbursing either the member, or the member can tell them what provider to send it to. So there's a couple of different ways they can get those dollars back. So the county's not actually touching any of the money. WageWorks would help with that part of it, and by doing a health reimbursement account, that member can get those dollars and those providers paid without being considered income, so it's tax-free to them. And that's why we run it through some type of reimbursement account. If you do it on your own and say, "Hey, we're just going to reimburse you after you meet this $500," that shows up as income, so we do want to be careful of that. So that's why we'd run it through there. So it does take an extra step for those members, and those members would have to understand what that process is, and so there is just a little bit of education on that part, because we're adding another step in there that isn't there today. But with that, we can see quite a bit of savings, and those employees are getting additional protections they don't have today. So instead of, for anyone that's on the $1,000 plan, they would now have a $500 deductible, but they would still have those copays. Anyone that's on that $300 deductible or 800 out-of-pocket, they now have copays to help pay those prescriptions, so they're not paying that full deductible and co-insurance. So that's where we're saying it's a blend of the two products, and there's help in getting them reimbursed for that facility charges, and then the county can save substantial dollars and take on some of that risk, and I think that's what we need to look at now. And that's what you were referring to before. But any questions on the plan?
Would you tell us what the WageWorks cost is going to be to the county if we do that?
Yes. So there is an administrative fee to do that. It's $4.95 per contract per month. So it ends up being, we calculated it out, about $5,000 a year to administrate it. And again, then it doesn't show as income to them, which, if we look at those dollars, what that difference would be.
Do we know how many of our employees have a flex account where they're already submitting stuff to WageWorks?
That I do not.
Lauren knows that. So 20 of, is it 84 or 94? How many employees? How many do we have on health insurance? Okay, so 87, and 20 of them are already using WageWorks, so.
So they're familiar with it, is what, yeah. And they can still do the flex part of it, because these HRA dollars are only going to pay for their deductible and that co-insurance part. So they can still use their flex dollars to help pay for their office visit copays, their prescription copays, any vision or dental as well, so they can still put dollars into that, and their cost share that they would have to meet. But you're right, they'd be familiar with how that works, and it's the same system where they can go in and say, "Okay, pay me back," or, "No, I want you to pay this provider directly, and here's the information." So it's pretty slick. The only thing they would not be able to do would be a debit card with the HRA, because we have to see those accumulators first.
I think the thing that needs to be explained to employees primarily is the facilities charges, the emergency room type things, and in hospitalization. Obviously, that's a big change from what we've gotten now under our grandfather policy. And as I look at it, from a company's point of view, with Crossbow Shield, we don't want people running to the emergency room just for a cough, and that's what really eats up some insurance dollars is going to the emergency room when you probably could have did urgent care, or you could have waited till the next morning, because emergency care was covered. So this is a big change for people to understand. The emergency room isn't your first place unless it's an emergency to go. Is that kind of a fair assumption? Why this change in facility charges in particular?
It's really not a change so much, because right now, if they go to an ER room, they still, they apply their deductible now, and then their co-insurance. The one change would be that if they've met that, then the county's paying the rest of it, so that part would be free for the rest of the year. So we would want to educate on, okay, even if you met your portion of it and the county's paying their portion of it for you, it might be cheaper for you, but in the long run, we have to be cognizant of what those costs are, because it does come back in premiums and what your cost share might be. It comes back in what the county can do for you in the future. So you're right, there is education that should be done around it, but it isn't necessarily a change for them, because they're already paying their deductible or co-insurance percentage.
So it throws a little bit more risk back at the county?
It does.
In addition to the risk of, so you have those figures?
The risk?
The additional risk on facilities charges that are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll wait for it.
It's, and I think that brings us to a great segue. That's what we should talk about now, because that is the big thing. Okay, great, we saved $256,000, but we know we're going to have to pay some of these dollars back, and what does that look like? So let's go to that third page that you have up. So again, we talked about the estimated premium savings. If we move to the $3,000 deductible, the monthly blended total would be $106,000. Our estimated savings is about 20%, and so $21,000 is what we're estimating, just in premium savings a month, $256,000. So we're going to continue to use that $256,000 just as our, our starting point on, yeah, the county can save a lot of money. We're making the employee, but now we need to make the employee whole. So then we look at that HRA reimbursement in that middle block, and I broke it down a couple of ways. The first one is what we would anticipate. We would anticipate 20 single, 20 family, having met their deductible and out-of-pocket, so the county paying a total of 2,000 or 4,000 for a single or family. If we calculate those, it would be 20 people, you pay 20, $2,000, that'd be 40,000 to the county. If we had 20 families meet it, you'd pay 4,000, that'd be 80,000. So a rough estimate of about $120,000 is what we would expect on reimbursements. When I say expect, this is kind of high, but it gives us, if, about half the people met it. This is what you're looking at. So that's one number we can look at. $120,000 is what that cost would be to you. Let's look at max, and this is what you two were talking about earlier, is what's our max risk here? Are we going to go upside down if every contract meets it? So we have 50 singles. If all 50 single contracts met it, and the county had to pay 2,000 on that, that'd be $100,000. If 34 family contracts met the full 4,000, that'd be $136,000. So the maximum at risk is $236,000. Now I took, because they were so good, to say, "What, what did really happen?" And so we were able to pull a couple of reports out that said, "In 2018, we pulled out facility charges, allowed amounts to say, how many people met facility charges?" So that'd be anything that would apply deductible or co-insurance, and what did that look like? We had 42 members that ranged anywhere from $500 to 4,000 that would have got reimbursed. And so that equaled about $86,000 in 2018, would have been the county, what they would have had to pay to reimburse. In 2017, we did the same thing. We had about 37 members that year, and so that was $75,000 that the county would have had to reimburse. So then we look at the hyster, when we look at the historical, definitely less than what I projected for the anticipated. I participated, anticipated 20 single, 20 family at 120. Historically, this is much less, but it gives us some idea, because that will fluctuate. So when I looked at the historical, the one thing to keep in mind, those dollars in there, because we have a good chunk of people, half of the people on that $300 deductible, that has all those office visits in there too, and those prescriptions, I couldn't strip that out. So those dollars would actually be less, because those allowed amounts would be out of there. So this number, 2017 and 18, is still a little. So this number, 2017 and 18, is still a little inflated. But just to get an idea of where we're at, this is as close as we could get. So then we add in our HRA administrative fees, which we talked about. And that's that $4.95 per participant, per contract, basically per month. 84 contracts right now at, at the $4.95 times 12 months, so about $5,000 annually. So then we can break that out on the bottom. And if we look at our estimated versus our max risk and then what historically happened in 18 and 17, we're going to use the annual projected savings at $256,000 across the board because that's what it, the premium difference is between moving from your two plans to the 3,000. Then we're going to look at what, what we would estimate under these scenarios that the county would have had to pay out. We estimate 120,000 payout, max was 236. But historically, it would have been about $86,000 or $75,000. We then know we have to pay those HRA fees of $5,000. So that brings us to our total savings. We would estimate about $131,000 savings. Maximum, if you had to pay out every single contract, you'd save $15,000. That's max. It's not going to happen unless there's some amazing catastrophic thing going on. In 2018, $165,000 would have been saved. And then 2017, $160,000, $176,000. So we can see the county could save substantial amount of money. And yet we can make the employee whole by having office visit co-pays, prescription co-pays. So it covers a lot of that first dollar benefits. And yet if they do go to the hospital, whether it's inpatient, outpatient, they go to the emergency room, they pay their first $500 up to a thousand. And they get preventative paid at 100% because we're no longer grandfathered. And everything goes towards that maximum. So they won't pay over $3,000 if they're on a single or if they're on a family, over $6,000 in co-pays and deductible co-insurance. So when we look at it, this, this appears to be a win-win. It does take education and it will take administratively a little extra work on those employees knowing they need to go to WageWorks. Yes, ma'am?
We pay 100% of the premium for singles. And what percentage do we pay on the family plan? I forget that. We pay 75%, so the employee pays 25% of the family plan. And they would keep paying 25% under this. But their premium would decrease. I mean, the, the family plan, do we have any idea how much it would decrease the, the premium share that the employees would be paying?
We did estimate that at one time. I don't have that with me. Because that family, we would change it. So it's the, if even one person on the family has to meet the entire family, not only are they going to save that 20% that we estimated, they're also going to save, I'm guessing another five or so percent on family just because now they have to meet that whole $6,000 versus one person meeting that. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me right now. And it's, you're right, these numbers we're looking at are if the county saved all of it, 100% of it. So we know we have to take those families out and do 75% of that.
Right.
We had, we had calculated that at one point.
And I don't remember the numbers, but I wanted everybody to understand the employee on a family plan will have a reduction in their health insurance costs that comes out of their check.
That would be correct, yes.
And the other change too, because right now we have single, we have like employee plus children, employee plus spouse, and employee plus family. Now it is just single or employee plus family regardless, right? It's just kind of two plans. We don't, we don't, there won't be separate premium amounts for like employee plus spouse.
You can, you can still split that out by contract type. So even though it's, you're on a single, if you're on a single plan, it's a $500 deductible. If you're on a family plan, but you can still split the premiums out four ways. So you can still charge less for your employee spouse or employee children than a full family. Yeah.
And since we're kind of self-insuring this first part, we can kind of pick the deductible that we want. We used 500 and 1,000 and then 1,000 and, or 2,000 and we're a man on the other one. But we kind of pick those. If we wanted to do something different as a board, we can decide what that deductible is. And so, you know, we kind of threw $500 in there in a thousand and then what is it, two and four?
A thousand and two.
Thousand and two for the family. So it does change it a little bit. But the good thing about it is, is the co-pays now go towards the total out-of-pocket where they didn't before. And so now they do. So that's a, that's a good thing there too. And so they're used to paying the 20 bucks rather than, so if somebody goes to and gets some, you know, medication and it's a $200 medication, they just pay the $20 while Mark pays the rest of it, the difference. And, and that $20 does count though towards the out-of-pocket for the employee. And so they're used to doing that now. And that's why they had that one plan, so they can keep doing that in this plan. But they get that added bonus. So the change would be for them is the deductible is going up. If we do the 500 to the 1,000, it would be deductible changed from 300 to $500, which, and again, that's more, I brought that up and thought that that was, which is still a very rich plan comparatively to what's out there in the market. There's a lot of $1,000 deductibles and 2,000 for singles. There's a lot of 2,000 and 4,000s and stuff like that. This $500 is a little bit more out-of-pocket. But with the co-insurance following through, I think hopefully that'll make up the difference. But still have a really strong policy. So, but if we wanted to change that deductible, we could certainly do that because it's our, basically, we're self-insuring the first part of insurance. And so we can make the rules or set the rules. These are suggestions that, that Sheri has and we brought forward also, so.
Just a quick question on the part of it that's administered by a third party for part of it there. That's always a problem for a lot of people to understand insurance, insurance billings. And, and we're paying $4.95 a month per, per contract. How much of that is going to be a problem in the initial year? I'll say the initial year of this contract for, for people like Laura, who they're going to walk in and say, what do I do with this? And throw it on her desk, so to speak. That'd be me. How do I administrate this? Laura, you know, your opinion on how that works? Is it, I'm going to give them a sheet and say, here's, here's your instructions on how to do that? Or is it going to take you 10 to 15, 20 minutes for every employee walks in with that and hopefully not have to repeat it twice during the year? They won't like it, I can tell you that upfront. You know, it's, it's an extra step for them, but. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the concept and the idea. I think it's something we need to move to. Things are changing. President today says he's going to overturn Obamacare and throw it out. So we don't, we don't know next year what we're going to be looking at, neither do you. That's a great mystery of health insurance and healthcare. However, I want to make sure that employees don't reject the plan based on what this extra step is. So that education process to me is an extremely important one that's going to take some staff time, whether it's in addition to Laura, several meetings of some sort. How much do you participate in, in that process?
So we will do initial open enrollment meetings. When this rolls out, we would come up and you probably want to do mandatory meetings at that point. And then myself and/or Casey, who works directly with me, we would be here to educate on, here's the plan, here's how it looks. And then here's the next step that you need to do once you meet your deductible. So we would definitely help on that part. But you're exact, you're exactly right. And this has been one of the concerns on making any changes is it is additional education. It's additional step. So what we just have to let them know is it's through WageWorks. Here's where you can find your explanation of benefits. Here's where you can find your member responsibility report. Show them examples of that. And then here's how you submit it. Will they come back to HR? Absolutely. And there'll be a good handful that'll show up and say, okay, I was supposed to do something, what do I do?
As a follow-up to that, obviously, we have union members and union negotiations that we have to go through here with any changes of any plans. If we were to, to agree today that we want to present this plan to, to the union, you're available to explain that better than we can?
Absolutely.
Through, at least through our union negotiator?
Yeah, absolutely. And we understand insurance is a complicated thing that some people grasp right away and other people don't and be happy to explain it. Yeah, so we'll be available for that, open enrollment meetings. Any support after that we can offer. But a lot of it after the fact would certainly fall.
On HR.
On HR.
And the employee. I guess in terms, I know people have other meetings we need to go to. I personally have no problem with going to the blended plan in the HRA. I know it's going to be more work. I want employees to understand that, that this thing's going to happen, so to speak, if we approve it. But I think we also need to get through our, our union reps with this proposal. So I don't have any, I don't have any problem with the numbers that you chose for a deductible. So I think that's, that's appropriate at this point.
And I think it's important, and tell me if I understand this correctly. What our employees have to know is that under this reimbursement type system, they just have to submit a copy of their bill for everything they do to WageWorks. That's, that's what it boils down to. I know we've said a whole bunch of complicated things. But what it really means is every bill you've got, unless you want to pay it yourself, you have to submit a copy of the bill to WageWorks.
And it would be anything that applies towards their deductible.
Right.
And co-insurance.
Right.
Prescriptions and office visit co-pays don't have to go through that. But they could, they can, they'll just disregard those ones. But yes, that would be the extra step is submit it to WageWorks. They will track it for you.
And so just understanding that, I mean, that simplifies it. What you do is you just submit all your bills, they'll sort through that part that you just said.
And then they'll explain, okay, this went to your deductible or this part went to your deductible and this part was paid 20%. And then you're going to be reimbursed this from the county for this portion of it.
And then what WageWorks does is send the finance office a bill every month that says this is the county's share of what it is. And then we pay one bill for whatever is our share of those $3,000, $6,000 amounts.
Yes. We do have to budget for this. I was told by legislative audit, we have to budget for this in each individual departmental, departmental level budget. So, you know, Laura and I just sort of brainstorming, we said, okay, how many contracts per office? And then come up with an amount, take what we think our average risk is going to be, divide that by contract, how many contracts per department, and then budget that way for 2020. So it's going to be a different budgeting process than what, on top of what the premiums are each year too. So, and is there a report where someone could log into WageWorks and get a report that says, okay, now I'm at $487 of my $500 deductible? I mean, is there, is that, if they're submitting kind of everything, as Commissioner Pearson said, they can log on and look at that?
WageWorks online and you'll have an updated account of your account?
Just like their flex account or if they had a health savings account there, the health reimbursement account shows that the employee can see, here's the max and here's what's been contributed to you already. So yeah, there is a report. And I have to double check, but when they sign into MyWellmark, WageWork links there. So if they have a flex account, it shows on there and they can just link right through there as well. It's all in one spot. I believe the HRA is there too, but I would have to double check that. But yes, they can see what their account balance is and what's remaining.
And I plead a little ignorance here. When would we change this to this plan? What's our effective date?
So this would be a renewal next January.
Next January. So we need to make this decision and educate and get through the union negotiations and our budgeting process in the next two or three months.
Union negotiations start next Tuesday morning.
Okay, next Tuesday morning. I guess I would, I would, you know, this is possible action, obviously we can't.
I guess, you know, because of that, if you just give us direction that this is what the board would like to present to the unions, I think working with Sheri and Lauren, I can use that and, and move that forward. And, and see where that goes.
Rather than needing a motion to do that, without objection, we'll move forward with presenting this to the union people. We may get some pushback and have to modify some things. So let's just, without objection, you like the numbers as presented and you want to move forward?
I do, I do wonder one other thing though before everybody says yes. I believe there are three things that will not be included in the new plan that are included in the current plan. And I, I just want to be sure everybody on the commission knows those, those items. Is it three or is it four?
It is three.
Okay.
You're right. And that should be something I bullet point when we talk to the union on it. There's the three things that are in there and they're really old benefits that we don't sell anymore. The first one is fourth quarter carryover, deductible carryover. So if somebody meets their deductible in the fourth quarter of the year, October, November, or December, that applies towards the deductible in the following year. We looked at that, that's about a quarter percent savings to take that off. The dollars that we paid in premium versus the few members that received some dollar benefit, the premiums were more than the benefit as paid in the last two, three years. Unless that's a true selling point that HR is using when new employees come in, most of the time we're just getting rid of it because it's confusing. It only applies to the deductible. It does not apply towards the total out-of-pocket, which is where it gets really confusing. So that's one of them. The other one is a common accident. And so if somebody is in an accident and they're on a family plan, they would just apply one deductible. Well, the way this plan design is, the family applies that one deductible. So we have to get rid of that. That's maybe a quarter of a percent, but maybe 0.15%. We can't tell if anyone's used it. Most people don't know and it's only the deductible, it's not the co-insurance out-of-pocket. So they're still paying it. That third one is on the $300 deductible plan. It's a 300 accident sup. Basically says if you're in accident, we'll, we'll pay that first $300. So their deductible's paid. And so then they just pay co-insurance until they hit their out-of-pocket. Usually if it's an accident, they're going to hit their out-of-pocket maximum. So it really isn't much of a benefit and it's hard to track who's had it. Most people don't know they're in there. So those are three recommendations that we said, let's clean this up, get rid of those. And a few of them, if we move forward with this, we, we couldn't put them in there anyways just because of how the plan is set up.
The fourth one was the tier four drugs.
That's right, thank you, forgot about that. So the other thing, you're right, we're recommending is to not cover tier four drugs. We have a couple of different formularies. The one we're on is called Blue RX Complete. And that one covers all four tiers, generic, preferred, non-preferred. And then the fourth tier is what we would call a lifestyle drug. It can be more expensive. It might, people might take it because you only take it once a day versus twice. There is something else out there. And so we drive people to get a tier one, two, or three. But if they choose to take it right now, they're still paying that $30. This would eliminate any of those tier four drugs altogether. And they would have to then, if they want it covered under the plan, choose a one, tier one, two, or three. We looked at a disruption report on that. What was there, two or three prescriptions? Yes.
The tier four. And the tier of the two fours, there's, there's, oh, there's an alternative. So it's not a drug that we're just cutting out, there's an alternative. But they're using the tier four because it's convenient, something they like better. But it's usually quite a bit more expensive. And so it's not like we're cutting out their, their medications for their, for their issue. There, there's an alternative that's in the one, two, or three, so.
And what we've noticed is when we pull disruption reports for the, we'll look back the last six months and on the last six months, how many members actually took a tier four drug? And what we find is a lot of times it might be a handful, two, three, maybe five people. And they received it one or two times. So. So they got it, didn't realize there's something else available, or it's not a long-term maintenance drug either. So what we're, what this would do then is, at the point of sale, they would choose one that's more appropriate cost-wise or is more effective that we're looking at. Because we look at this twice a year and say, there's no reason to be taking that. So it would drive them to one of those from the beginning, which saves in cost of that drug, which saves in overall cost of the plan, which saves in premium. So it's something that we're moving a lot of our employer groups to. And it, we haven't seen a lot of disruption on that piece. So that would be another recommendation we would do. And we can do either one of those with this plan, but that is something we certainly look at.
So again, are we prepared to, to, to move forward to union negotiations with this at this point in time, the way it's written? Okay. Without objection, we'll, we'll move forward and present that to the union people. And then your work's cut out for you.
I, I understand that one.
All right.
Yeah, it's one of those things, they, we don't wanna take away benefits, we wanna enhance, and that's what we're looking for.
I thank you for the presentation. We know that we have to try and control costs. We know that we don't wanna to hurt benefits for our employees, but same time, the reality is, things changed. And hopefully, they'll change again next year.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is our motion due adjourned?
So moved.
For a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Sheri.